Good evening. The most difficult part even in a democracy like ours is to protect the interests of the underprivileged. It is also the most essential. To work towards their upliftment and to ensure that their rights are upheld. Unfortunately, at every step, the privileged, the rich and the state sometimes seem to be trying to suppress this very group. And those who speak up for them are often targeted, banned as vested interests, sometimes even called anti-national. Here is why I speak about this tonight. The AIADMK government in Tamil Nadu has become so desperate to silence any kind of opposition, to silence any kind of voices that question it, to silence the muckr, that they have now put it in writing. They are now brazenly asking for full-fledged authority without factoring in the voice of people. They want to bypass public hearings. After the first meeting, they don't want to go back to the people when it comes to deciding on an infrastructural project which impacts those very people. With or without their approval, Tamil Nadu government just wants to go straight right ahead and start building roads and bridges and treatment plants and fancy highways and new buildings. Because public activists, NGOs, according to them, are interfering with the smooth operations of their development plan and delaying the projects. Can you imagine that? Now let me make one thing very clear before this debate. We are not against development, we are not against building new infrastructure. We understand it is for the progress of this nation and its people. We understand it creates hundreds of jobs as well. But if done in a haphazard, insensitive, ill-planned manner, it will only lead to destruction of lives and livelihood. So tonight, we ask every of those in the state, in Tamil Nadu, in the government there or in any other part of our country, why would you not want to listen to your own people and railroad them for some so-called development?
Few months ago, Tamil Nadu government faced stiff opposition to their efforts to acquire land of farmers and others for the Salem highway projects. Court then asked the state to back off and first hold talks with landowners. Perhaps that's why state wants to bypass the public.
It is being seen that Tamil Nadu government is trying to find a bypass to the clause of public hearing before implementing any project which falls under category A and category B1. It seems like Tamil Nadu government would like to conduct one public hearing and if it goes ahead or if the public hearing is stalled, they would like to go ahead and get the environment clearance without going with consecutive public hearing.
A section of fringe elements and individuals with anterior motives take the route of judiciary by filing public interest litigations, which in turn are meant to stall these projects, large infrastructure projects. This is detrimental to the development of the state and the people.
Opposition and environmental activists slammed the Tamil Nadu government for tailgating one such demand among many.
This is a very, very dangerous stand. This is a completely anti-democratic stand. Because what this will lead to is that the government will itself have one or two people in these public hearings who will raise these voices or do commotion and they will close down the public hearing saying that commotion happened.
From Starlight to Salem and even Save RA protest in Mumbai, at every step, our democracy has ensured people who get impacted by the projects have a say. Will that right be taken away now? Let's debate.
It's good evening to our guests. Mr. S. Murli Daran, an AIADMK supporter. Meera Parkar, social activist. Sandeep Singh, RSI supporter. Stalin Dayanand, project director with NGO Vanashakti. And Paschak Ghosh of the BJP. I also have Krishna Mitru, an environmentalist, joining us this evening. Now viewers, this might be a proposal by the Tamil Nadu government right now to the center. But don't think it can't happen in the part of the country where you live. Today, if Tamil Nadu is able to say this and demand this tomorrow, it could be your state government. So listen to our experts carefully. Raise your voice, tell us what you think. Is this the way to go forward? Our project delays because of the people who live in that part of the world and are demanding their rights as those project delays more important than the rights of those people. That's the basic question I'm asking this evening. And I'm going to go across to Krishna Mitru first and ask him what he thinks of this idea, where the government is saying, please, let's have one hearing and get done with it and not go back to the people because we can't deal with them.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. I would touch the issue of primarily good governance. Here, we are talking of the BJP government at the center. We are talking of good governance. What is good governance? The government is trying to introduce a single-window clearance system. That means that we have one source which will give all the clearances. Now primarily, we are talking of the EPA clearance. Here, any major project, whether in the state or the district or in the center, needs an environmental protection clearance. Here, if the state government is trying to bypass that system, is the state government trying to overlook the provisions provided? After long-time study in the environmental protection laws, are we trying to overrule those laws just because BJP is in the governance? We, I personally feel that laws have been framed to be abided by and to be followed by everybody, whether it is a ruling government or it is the opposition government. We should not violate these laws. The violation means that we have some malfied interest somewhere. We should not overrule that. This is the primary rule of good governance.
The violation means there is some malfied somewhere and that should not be allowed. Let me also take it across to Mr. Stalin Dayanand. Stalin, in Mumbai itself, people have been campaigning to save this green patch called the RA forest. Save RA is that campaign and it's still going on. Do you think that right can be taken away from people just in the name of development?
Definitely, the fundamental right of right to life is under threat. Let's take RA for example. Nobody ever asked the tribals whether they would move out for that car shed or whatever projects are coming into the RA forest. Nobody asked the citizens of Mumbai whether they are willing to let go of all the greenery which is remaining, the last remaining green spaces. This is as far as the planning stage goes. Now, when they have come to the execution stage and when there is a public hearing which is being held, the officials run away from the hearing and just say, okay, we are not observing, we are not writing anything, we are just running away from here. So it's become a farce, this entire process of public participation. Here, you're talking of involving people in the decision-making process and that is absent. The government never consults the citizens on any project. In fact, if you look back, last month, the Honorable High Court of Bombay also expressed this opinion. She asked, it has asked the government whether they even talk to people when they conceive a project. Here is a case where you bring something into an area where the people do not know what is coming at them. All of a sudden, Monday morning, you realize that something big is coming up in your neighborhood and there's nothing you can do. And let us get this one fundamental thing straight. No one in his senses will obstruct to a government infrastructure project. It is the manner in which it is executed. There is always a way of involving citizens and finding a middle way out. But this government has specialized in making a mockery of all the procedures, of all the environmental laws, of all the public hearing participation. Everything is on paper. If you go back on the Environment Day, the Prime Minister himself has sent out a message saying that our development model is so faulty that we are gradually taking the planet to a ruin. So when you say that yourself, then what is the corrective steps that you are taking? You brand everyone as anti-national and just discard people's opinion, bulldoze your way into neighborhoods, into farmlands, into forests and just don't talk to people. People are going to react and people know eventually their voices are not being heard. So it's a frustration which is boiling up and this is not good for a democracy, it's not good for the country, it's not good for any project.
From a time, Mr. Stalin...
You will participate in every project, you only need to involve them.
From a time where our biggest problem was that the government wasn't moving at all on any development infrastructural projects, that they weren't taking any decisions at all, that there was corruption going on and decisions were allegedly being made on the basis of who's offering you more money, to now a time where the government just wants to speak through the entire process without really doing any due diligence, without talking to the people who it might impact. Lacks of livelihood could get impacted with big highway projects or infrastructural projects. But who cares? That's just slowing us down and that's what matters, Mr. Murli Daran. That we put it on paper how many kilometers of road we've built without really bothering to factor in what happened to all of those farmers who got displaced.
Did I answer?
Yes.
Okay, let me remind some things, Tanvi, because you know, some people have selective amnesia. We are serving our second term. Normally, people don't get their second term if they don't perform well in the first term. So this is our second term. And you're talking about a state, you know, which is number two in well-governed states in India. That is, you know, we are much, much, much ahead of your West Bengal's and UP's where you literally have law and order breakdown. Next, we are the best-to-inwest state, number one. Okay, the third, the number-one state in HDI, Human Development Index. Now, this is after all those setbacks and sabotages by the opposition government, which was DMK, who tried to stop the Starlight project, who tried to stop the Methian project. They got the eight-lane highway project shell and they got everything shell. I heard gentleman who's talking about, you know, being called as anti-national and naxal, urban naxal, that's the right word, etc. So I need to answer these people. If you keep blocking development in a state because you are desperate for power and you're not able to do anything to DMK, in spite of Madame Jalita not being there, you know, they get cold turkey.
You need help, you need help, please go and get some help.
And they have to do all kind of marketing.
Mr. Murli Daran firstly, this is not a political debate. There is no DMK on this panel. One minute, please.
Please listen.
You are misrepresenting some facts, I just want to clarify that. Firstly, there is no DMK on this panel, this is not a political debate.
Let me finish first.
Secondly, if you are so proud of your stellar record, why do you want to change things on ground?
But I need to tell you the reasons. No, I want to state certain facts, I mean, Tanvi, you all have to understand. See, you're not giving us an opportunity. I said people have pre...
Like you are not giving opportunity to the people in your state. Like you're not giving opportunity to the people in your state. Exactly this conversation, Mr. Murli Daran. If somebody at a public hearing comes and interrupts you and asks you a question, you and your government is trying to tell us that we will walk away, end that hearing, then go ahead and build the road, destroy their homes, take away their fields, take away their land and not allow them to speak. Now, when I do that to you, look how agitated you get.
That is exactly, that is exactly the urban naxals wanted to do along with the opposition. This is what happening to the center, it's happening to a state government too because they think we are puppets of the center. It's unfortunate, but that's their limited thinking, we can't help it. But state will go ahead with this development.
Sure it will, doesn't matter what the people think.
Not to the opposition, not to the urban naxals.
And might I just point out to you?
The commitment we have is for the people.
Okay, might I just point out to you that it is the people of the state and can we just pull up the visuals from Salem protest that we were also running at the beginning of the show? These are people whose lands, whose property, the farmers, who've been tilling that land for years now, who came out in protest. May I also remind you, since you were talking about short-term memory and amnesia, Mr. Murli Daran, may I also remind you that the court itself in this matter has told the government to back off, to go and listen to the people before you acquire the land. And thirdly, if you think coming back for a second term is any kind of reflection on your great governance, may I remind you? Let me finish my point. May I also remind you what happened to the state of West Bengal with 33 years of left rule? That state was destroyed, people kept choosing it back. You did answer, you made your point. Now, if you think this is a place where you get to have a monologue without the public interfering, then that's not going to happen because this is not the state of Tamil Nadu. Here, people get to have a voice. Meera Parkar is joining us this evening. Meera Parkar, help us understand, there is a process in place.
Tanvi, what is the point?
A big project that will involve massive land acquisition, that will involve displacement of hundreds or thousands of people, is one hearing, just one hearing enough to hear the people's voice?
Not at all, because the whole process of giving environmental clearance or rejecting it has to be based on certain criteria and views. And those views cannot be just of the bureaucrats like one, Mr. Murli Daran. It has to include the views of the people and the directly affected people will obviously have privacy. That has been the environmental law since years and decades. In this country, which came out as a result of the people's resistance, questioning and suggesting the ways out. We are not against development, but in the name of development, but anything is happening. From the company like Vedanta to the express highways and other kinds of infrastructure projects, where the people's livelihoods are not considered, the real economic cost-benefit analysis doesn't come into being and the whole ecosystem getting affected is something that gets neglected, whether it is a river, a river valley or the agricultural fields. And then that results in the long-term impact which are also not considered. But let me tell you that Tamil Nadu government at this point of time is writing to the...
We are still the number-two state in GDP, ma'am.
Oh, we don't care about the GDP only. The GDP must include the environmental losses and the value...
You don't have to care because you don't live in Tamil Nadu. I don't care about your view because you don't live in Tamil Nadu. You come living in Tamil Nadu, then we'll care about your views. You don't live in Tamil Nadu, you're sitting somewhere in India and making a comment about a state which is highly progressive.
Mr. Murli Daran, I have been visiting Tamil Nadu.
You are making comments about a state which is highly progressive, sitting somewhere in a corner in India. Let me remind you about Starlight, since you brought it up. Starlight, now it's proven, there is no pollution because of Starlight, but there is natural pollution because of Starlight. There is polluted even now without Starlight.
Okay, where is this? Where is this investigation? Where is this report? Mr. Murli Daran, where is this report?
I would request...
Mr. Murli Daran, where is this report? Where is this report that gives a clean sheet to Starlight from any kind of pollution?
Tamil Nadu is anyway writing to the center.
Mr. Mitru, I'm going to complete it just a bit.
I replied to Starlight, Starlight even without Starlight, there is water pollution and air pollution.
One minute, one minute, Mr. Mitru, one minute.
People are laughing, people are laughing.
Can we just hear Mr. Murli Daran? Can we hear Mr. Murli Daran? This is very interesting.
Vedanta is a professional company, why don't you all understand this?
Of course.
Professional company doesn't have the right, under the professional ethics, to kill the people who...
When you bring up a point, I need to counter that.
And kill the innocent people whom I have visited, have you visited?
Nobody is killing the people. We are the best governed state and the most developed state. We are not in a West Bengal, we are not...
So, Mr. Murli Daran, calm down, why are you yelling?
And the number-two in GDP.
Why are you yelling?
You have to do respect.
Mr. Murli Daran, why are you yelling? Calm down, nobody is taking away your land, don't worry.
Your side is not laughing, you are sitting somewhere.
Don't worry, we are not going to build a highway over your house.
The problem with Sabrimala also, you sit in North India.
Oh my god!
The feeding of people here.
Oh my god, is that why you are angry tonight? Mr. Murli Daran, this is not about Sabrimala, please take it up with the Supreme Court. Please take it up with the Supreme Court, calm down. Now, until you calm down, I'm going to move on to our other guest. I cannot have this kind of yelling and shouting and that also illogical yelling and shouting on my show.
But we have proven a point.
Mr. Paschak Ghosh.
I would request...
Mr. Paschak Ghosh and Sandeep Singh haven't spoken yet.
You have shut it down.
Mr. Paschak Ghosh.
I would request...
Can we please put down the audio of the man who is yelling non-stop? Unfortunately, his party and his government wants to drown out the voice of people, but here he wants to be the only one who gets to have a say.
You're right.
Mr. Paschak Ghosh of the BJP, good evening to you. Mr. Ghosh, do you think that your party or the center should accept this kind of a proposal? I'm going to just read it out for you and for the benefit of all our viewers. This is part of a larger set of recommendations that the state government of Tamil Nadu has sent to the center. Point number 10 is about environmental clearance for public importance projects. Here it says, "Tamil Nadu Pollution Control Board has faced a lot of difficulties for smooth conducting of public hearings for certain type of projects because the public..." "...because the public NGOs, representatives or political parties for self-development with vested interests disturb the proceedings. In some cases, a hearing was stopped in the middle and the meeting wound up. In such cases, second time hearing was conducted with heavy police protection. Hence, projects are getting delayed and for some projects, permission could not be accorded. Permission could not be accorded because people over there protested against this project. Due to this, investors faced heavy loss, people, no, investors. Therefore, it is requested that the Environment Ministry and the Government of India may consider for issuance of environmental clearance without insisting, without insisting for conducting public hearing once again. If somebody comes and speaks up and the meeting gets interrupted, please let's go on with our project and not bother about the people. Do you think this is a good idea?
First of all, I must tell you that my background is from the industry. So I have been facing those clearances for a long time and I know what happens inside the boardroom or inside these public hearing. So I can tell you one thing regarding the government of, our central government is very clear. You remember that we have signed the Paris Agreements and we have 100% almost non-negotiable on the terms and condition we have signed the environment agreement in Paris. Zero emission is, zero tolerance to emission is our motors and we find and we believe this is by the people, of the people and for the people. So I don't think the application which was made by the Tamil Nadu government to the center will be, I mean, will be entertained in the formats they want. Because we always think that the stakeholders, the public, the environment, you know, we are left with only 12 years, temperature of the earth is going up like 1.5 degree. Also, we have just left with 12 years, otherwise there will be massive disaster. So we are non-negotiable as for the environment laws are concerned, as the prevalent laws are concerned and the guidelines of Supreme Court. You perhaps remember in case of Udisada, Balko, the Supreme Court has given a very clear guidelines.
Let's try to keep it simple, Mr. Ghosh, let's try to keep it simple. There is a current existing law which is in place for public hearings. There is a process where permissions are given, applications are made. You're supposed to hold public hearings within the period of 45 days, then go ahead, submit your reports and further seek clearance from the Environment Ministry. Now, I am asking you, this Tamil Nadu government is saying, let's bypass this system, it's slowing us down. We need to be growing at 10%, 11%, let's bypass it, do you agree?
No, personally, no, no, not at all. Personally, I don't think that that could be accepted by our government in totality. What possibly we can find, I can share my experience, that could be a provisional clearance, giving some undertaking on those issues which are not affecting directly the stakeholders or there could be a midterm clearance and until unless those parameters are satisfied, the clearance, final clearance will not be given. So that project is not affected, the stakeholders' objections or stakeholders' standpoints are properly honored.
Yes.
At the same time...
But our problem here is, when you start keeping the interest of investors above the interest of your own citizens.
I am very clear on this point.
So let me take that point out to the other side, I got your point, I got your point.
That comes first, that comes first.
Meera Parkar wants to make a point.
That comes first.
Yes, Ms. Parker.
First of all, I want to ask whether Mr. Ghosh is speaking on behalf of the Bharatiya Janata Party or not. Because nowadays in Tamil Nadu, like states where they are not in power, they have raised voice sometimes, but not in other states. And it is the center which is now killing the National Green Tribunal, which is the center that is changing the laws, environmental to labor laws against the people and their livelihood. And it is the center which is giving, when it gives the provisional clearance as Mr. Ghosh is referring to, that really leads to irreparable losses and irreversible works which then you cannot raise a voice against. We experienced it in the...
No, 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 first of all, this is exactly what I'm suggesting. But you can't find, our government has given a single clearance without the public hearing. We have not given a single clearance as of yet, can you show me projects?
No, the public hearings have become farcical, that also needs to be changed. And that is why I'm saying that for the various projects now, the 2013 Act, the first part of the Act, Mr. Ghosh, is really something that brings in the people's participation. The Gram Sabhas consultations and such other things and not only environmental but social impact assessment. Your party and your government has absolutely neglected that act and has come in to the state act which really leaves the land acquisition process absolutely equivalent to what was being done by the British government in the pre-independence era. And hence, now the laws need to be...
Man, there is two different issues, the land acquisition issue is one thing and the technical clearance for the projects is different. You are talking about the land acquisition which is of different impact. I'm talking about EPA environmental impact assessments.
Yes, but land acquisition...
No, land, every state has got their own land roll.
Okay, let her finish a point, please, yes.
Just one more minute, one more minute, Mr. Ghosh. Land acquisition is in the central union list and land is in the concurrent list. Now, the Land Acquisition Act for the center is also an enabling act but also needs to be implemented only based on the clearances of the project. How would the clearance be given? Through the participatory process, the democratic right to be affirmed or not?
And in the larger, yes, and the point here is...
The social environmental impact assessment needs to be really scientific. I'll just take one more minute, Tanvi, to say that it is necessary for the voter citizens, as Upendra Bachchanji calls it, to watch what is happening on the environmental laws, on this issue as well as other issues and what is happening to the National Green Tribunal type of institution, which was playing a really important role. But when they appoint the people on such tribunals and such institutions and when they change the rules, they're killing all these processes. Public hearing to the tribunal and this is what we must object. And their lack of dialogue with the people has resulted in the death of Professor G D Anavai.
So what are the governments done? Ms. Parker, they have made it easy... They have made it easy to do due diligence, they have made it easy to carry out the study of the impact of any project. They have made it easy for land acquisition, all of this to ensure that there is, that the project infrastructural development is easy, but what about the people? What about the people who get impacted? How are we going to ensure that they get their dues? Mr. Mitru, I see your hand and I see Mr. Murli Daran's hand, but please bear with me because Sandeep Singh hasn't made his opening comments yet. So I'm going to go to him first. Sandeep Singh, you've heard everybody's view on this panel. Now, nobody is saying no to development. But we saw what happened in Salem, people did come out. Ladies who had been working hard, tilling that land for years together said, please do not take away our land. Ladies who had been working hard, tilling that land for years together said, please do not take away our land. Do you think it is right to not listen to them and take a decision on an eight-lane highway which they obviously are not going to use at any point?
Because experience on rehabilitation is also very bad. You have to fight and fight to get that use and that rehabilitation as in Narmada.
I think the moment you asked me the question.
Go ahead please, Sandeep Singh.
Yeah, so the moment, you know, we can keep the activists and politicians out of this whole process, the work will go on smoothly. Any development work that you will do, you will need land and you will do some damage to the environment. You can't do a development work or even a construction of a house without doing that. So, the problem in India is that any development work that you see, people, the activist becomes a problem. We're just talking about RA colony issue, nobody has answered what should be the alternate to that.
Hmm.
If you travel the alternate route, it takes you two hours one way to travel, you know.
There are seven alternatives, there are seven alternatives, I must correct it.
Nobody has answered that and the same people will go.
Let him finish, let him finish and you can respond.
Just, just listen to me, I'll urge you and have basic discipline.
Shall I let him finish, I will come back.
To keep the activists out, your problem will be solved. Wherever you will have an activist, there will be a problem. This is the problem with the activist, I just give you a demo.
After this, I'll tell you, you have to listen.
These are nuisance makers, activists, they can't let you speak other, these are the people who talk about freedom of expression.
One minute, gentlemen, one minute.
Thirty minutes, I came to speak after thirty minutes and this guy can't listen.
Let him finish.
I just gave you a demo, the kind of nuisance the activists create in any development work. They can't let a thirty-minute debate go without disturbing. How can they let a development happen in the country?
Okay.
You know, the same problem, if you remove the activist from any problem, you will find there is no development problem in this country.
So, who will speak up for the underprivileged?
There will be, there will be no issues.
So, who will speak? So, who will speak up for the people who don't know any better?
You know, these are people who protested Narmada Dam and they were never bothered how people are getting water and what happened after that.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
What happened to the rehabilitation of all those thousands of people who got displaced? Who will speak up and ensure they get any, any kind of rehabilitation?
Perfect, so let's ask, what is the rehabilitation plan? Is anybody asking that?
Yes.
We have, we have seen, they have, this, this is the activists who have a problem with development in Tamil Nadu. They had an issue with the nuclear reactor where the then Man Mohan Singh very specifically named that NGOs are the problem. We have seen the Tutti Corine, people have lost jobs. Do these activists have answered, can they provide alternate jobs?
Is it more important than losing lives?
And the same people whom they have made jobless.
Is it more important than losing lives? Who is responsible for creating jobs, the government?
The movement to keep this activist, the problem is resolved, it's as simple as that.
Why don't you understand?
I, I heard you out, Mr. Sandeep Singh, here is what you, where you are going wrong. Who is responsible for creating safe jobs? The government is, if the government comes about and puts in a toxic factory, then it is the government's problem to shut it down. Lives are most, more important before jobs come in. If people are not alive, creating jobs for them is not going to matter. So, please stop spreading this false propaganda because people are dying in that place and unless we know why people are dying, why people are falling ill in every single family, nothing else is acceptable. Mr. Mitru has been wanting to make a point, go ahead please.
Ah, yes, number one, I would request that if we are talking of a debate, let us make a debate and let us not make it a garbage. What I have found every debate is that people want to make their point without listening to us.
Yeah, provided you give us time to talk, so you interrupt between, so why, what can we talk?
Please, please listen to what I'm saying, I listen to your garbage, please wait what I'm saying. Please wait and listen.
Yeah.
All that I'm trying to say is.
Your garbage is better than mine, I know that, but you also give us time when we talk, don't interrupt, no? In that case, don't interrupt.
Mr. Mitru, please, Mr. Mitru uninterrupted please.
Please keep talking and I am listening. No, no, let, let, let the other people talk, they are talking garbage.
Mr. Mitru, go ahead and make your point please.
Please listen to me what I'm saying. Our, our talk today is about a specific project, environmental protection in Tamil Nadu project. Please hold on, let us not talk of. Now, here, what we are saying is, I understand violation of any environmental laws is, appears to be, as it appears to be, malefied. Let, I would say, let the National Green Tribunal, which is a right-hand arm, a right arm of environmental protection law or agency or ministry of the government of the nation, take action in this case. We have a lot of arguments coming left, right and centre. We are trying to bypass all the laws which in my opinion is not correct. Let us follow the laws.
Right.
The moment we try and sort out all these things locally.
No, but the fact is, Mr. Mitru, it's not about one specific project. Now, Krishna Mitru, you know, it's not about one specific project, it's not about one specific instance. This is about a state government wanting to change the entire law so that they don't have to wait or hear out the people of their own state so that they don't have to wait for a public hearing, but they can just go right ahead and railroad all the voices and build the road that they want. Yes, Mr. Murli Daran, go ahead, nobody is going to interrupt you now, but please limit it to actual constructive points without making remarks on anybody else, go ahead now.
Yes, yeah. But, but, but no, I'm not making any remarks, but please give me one minute to elaborate without interruption. I'll tell you one thing, there are foreign forces who are, you know, trying to damage India. I'll give you one example today, which is PETA. PETA was trying to shut down elephant tourism in Jaipur. I am personally involved in getting their petition which is seven seventy pages dismissed today. So, I have to give you this option, you know, I have to give you this example. Similarly, the Sterlite, the madam was talking about Sterlite. Sterlite today, it's proven very clearly, the report which has come out yesterday, the air and the water is getting polluted even without Sterlite. So, there is an NGO involvement, they are also called Makkal Adigarum. And who sponsored them, we all know, it's by foreign agents and also the opposition. So, there are issues like this and, and Mr. Mitru spoke about National Green Tribunal. The National Green Tribunal has given a go-ahead sign for Sterlite multiple times. So, and one more point I would like to make, we have shut down twenty-seven resorts in the elephant corridor by going to Supreme Court. That happened just two months back in Tamil Nadu. This is a highly developed state with intelligent people.
One minute is done.
People want some of the highest, I mean.
I will give you fifteen more seconds.
Intellectual capital, not to India, to the world also. So, please give us that respect, please.
Okay, do you think people should not have a right to even go to court when it comes to governments' development projects? Because, because urban naxals and foreign institutions are blocking everything, they are going to the court.
They have every right, I'm sorry. Tanvi, they have every right to revolt and do everything they want. As far as it's a people woman, no government is going to object or stand by their way. These are NGOs, foreign-funded NGOs, these are fringe elements who are, you know, powered by the opposition.
Stalin Dayanam please.
Who is asking them to make trouble and it keeps going on and on and on.
Like I started this debate and I've been proven right about it. Name everybody as anti-national, foreign-funded NGOs, urban naxals and get over with it and, and drown out the voice of the common man.
I'll give you example.
One minute, now time is done now, Mr. Murli Daran, your time is done. I gave you one minute and twenty seconds to make that point, Stalin Dayanam's turn now.
His time is up, his time is up.
PETA, India issued four crores last year for what? To enhance India?
See, I, I take.
Yes, Mr. Dayanam.
Can he, can he stop for a second?
Go ahead please.
Okay, okay, now I'm, now I need to clarify certain things. All the titles which they have given us, urban naxals, anti-nationals, we accept it with lot of humility. We take it as a accreditation of our work. Secondly, the gentleman who was talking about RA asked what is the alternatives, which shows that he is poorly educated on the issue. There are seven alternatives without cutting a single tree to locate the metro car shed which we have time and again given to the government and the government has maintained a silence over all the seven options. So, let us, don't brand people as anti-nationals or obstructionist.
I must tell you that none of those seven have any basis.
If he is a genuine activist, we give you solution. We are telling you, we are telling you.
No, he will not interrupt me now, he went on, now he was talking. Value to create problem for Mumbaiers.
Sorry?
You did, you did interrupt me, you did interrupt me and you should realise how it feels to be interrupted.
My dear friend, you should know, you should know, you should know, please listen, please listen.
Please listen now. Or the urban naxals and that is how you need to be dealt with.
Oh, your current government doesn't talk to people.
Listen to me when I spoke after thirty minutes and you don't know how to behave. You're the problem with activists that you don't have a basic manners.
So, now you are not going to listen.
The current government is talking to projects and that is why you have been giving a lot of slack.
We will come for behaviour classes from you, but you need to do your homework.
Okay, unfortunately, I have run out of time and now we've come to a point where multiple people are talking. So, I will apologise to everybody, I'm interrupting right now, but thank you for joining us on this debate. The idea was, viewers, to bring to you what it is that the state government of Tamil Nadu is thinking and also warn you that tomorrow any other government could do this. So, easy to turn around and say that those who raise their voice for the underprivileged are anti-nationals, are foreign-funded NGOs whose only interest is to block government work and have vested interests of various political parties. But think about it, would you not want to understand the impact of any development project that takes place inside your home, around your home, on your land? Would you not want the government to give you a fair deal out of it? Even if there is a redevelopment project in any urban city, there is a negotiation that happens between the landowners and the builder. That's how the system works. Imagine tomorrow the government says, stands up and says, no, we don't care, you're slowing down my redevelopment process, get out of this building and take whatever money we decide to give you. Because that is exactly what the Tamil Nadu government wants to do in its own state. They try taking away the land of hundreds of farmers and tribals to build that pet project of the chief minister, the highway from Chennai to Salem. It got stopped because the court stepped in. So, now they are coming up with these innovative ways of completely bypassing the citizen, the water, you. Stop this, raise your voice, ensure that your Neta knows that your voice and your vote counts. If it is development, it is for you and your voice must matter. The thousands who get impacted and displaced with any development project must get their fair share. Otherwise, it's of no use. Completely out of time on this edition of Last Word, but we are going to keep a very close track on this development. The centre has yet to respond, BJP is refusing to take a clear stand on it, but we hope this proposal is sent straight to the garbage bin. Thank you for joining us tonight.